Business, let us all do it's best interest of the city and its citizens. Let's leave here tonight with a lot accomplished and look forward to a great weekend. In your name, Craig.
Amen.
Amen.
City council meeting for the month of July 2021, please come to order. Will everybody please silence their phones? Terry, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy?
Chris Foster. Casey Griffin?
Here.
Rebecca Prince?
Here.
Melissa Choat?
Here.
Sharon Williams?
Here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Ally Sugg?
Jim Adams?
Here.
Press? Cherry Lynn?
Here.
Let the record show, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is waive the reading and approve the minutes as presented by the July city council meeting. Do we have a motion?
June.
I mean June, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Nancy?
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Upstaying.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Upstaying.
Is that four?
Four.
You'll need to vote for the motion.
Jimmy Clark?
What is it, yes?
You want to vote yes, if you want to waive the...
Four, yes.
Yes.
And pray the minutes.
Motion carried. Next item is approval of the payments journal for the month of June 2021. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Nancy?
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Upstaying.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Upstaying.
Is that four?
Four.
You'll need to vote for the motion.
Jimmy Clark?
What is it, yes?
You want to vote yes, if you want to waive the...
Four, yes.
Yes.
And pray the minutes.
Motion carried. Next item is approval of the payments journal for the month of June 2021. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Nancy?
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item is approval of the street sanitation, general, community center, O and M, and miscellaneous funds for the month of June 2021. Do we have a...
Second. Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, you have the supervisors' reports in your packets. Do you have any questions for the supervisors? Okay. Chief Robert Tills, would you like to...
Currently, the fire department, we have one vacancy. That was a very poor time. This is an unfunded position. We currently aren't paid our hourly salary for some reason during this time. We're still paying for benefits to add to that cost. One unfortunate thing that is happening now that we didn't see beginning of the year is we had some operational changes and one of our employees limited on emergency response. So that's kind of what is worse. Can you all hear? Last month, we did run 164 calls. Our call volume has recently gone out of the blue, especially with vacation times. Apparently, our call volume is consistent with those departments like Stuckard, Harrison, and 33 full-time firemen. And we have 30.
And that cost with benefits is about 43,900, I believe.
The benefits portion is, I believe, around $8,000 to $10,000. That's a lot in medical coverage.
Right.
So our percentage of the hourly rate is already pushing. So we're just taking a break basically from part-time position to get a benefit so we can secure that staff.
I couldn't hear that. I can't really hear anything.
Jason, we're having a hard time hearing you over here.
You're a big guy.
What would you like me to repeat? All of it?
The last little bit.
Okay, so currently, we have, I mean, our firefighters make $11 an hour. So we already budget that 24/7 for two people on. So what this does is the cost increase for benefits for our lock fee and for the medical coverage is about 8,000, I think, $9,000 or $10,000 a year. So that's what I'm asking for additional based on the increase for our call volume. Last night, we just had our fifth drowning, but the season, unfortunately. So we also need a lot of time and effort and specialized training. So for succession planning purposes, that's why I'm bringing this forward now instead of at budget time.
So it's a full-time, a brand-new, completely new full-time position?
Correct.
But he said that he had budgeted the hour, so it really is just the net benefit of about $10,000?
Correct.
Additional into the budget?
$10,000?
I want to stress too, this is based off an operational need. Beginning of the year, we budgeted, we had an employee that was able to respond to emergencies in a large percentage. Now they're unable to, so that's why we're going to make up for that shortfall in terms of this position. We're upset.
So then we have four full-time?
Correct.
Are they going to be in the office?
They're going to be operational on the fire engine wherever we need it, primarily during daytime hours.
This is someone you've already employed for this, or is this after, like, go up and hire?
This will be a new requirement.
Do you have somebody in mind already?
Just taking...
We just, for one position that we have, we have 20 applicants.
Okay.
Which are just starting that process. So I want to wait till tonight, make that process, and hopefully include two positions versus just search for one.
Okay.
So those announcements are getting in, are getting submitted, and we have those applications.
So no one in mind, but you have several potentials?
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, we have on new business, we have an additional fireman, but that's to replace who we lost, right?
Correct.
Catherine, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve...
You probably need a dollar amount.
He said it's going to be a motion.
Forty-three, nine was the dollar amount. Is that right, Amy?
Yes.
Amy?
Additional is like eight, 10.
You're showing that I wanted to...
You have money in the part-time budget, I think, is what...
Which includes that one.
Right.
You have money in the part-time budget, right?
Correct.
And so he's just wanting to add that, move that money into a full-time position and add benefits to that, I think, is what he...
So a dollar.
So it won't be the full 43,900, yeah.
So he's moving some money and then asking for benefits.
For the benefits?
For that position, so $10,000. I don't, I didn't know those numbers, I'm sorry. With taxes and everything, I'm guessing about 10, I'm guessing-ish.
So we still need to know exactly what that dollar amount is?
I do not, I didn't figure that today, I didn't.
You could approve the position... Jason, do you know, you said 8,000 or something, do you know how much, is that what you're asking for, is an additional 8,000?
The cost to cover the benefits of that person, and what I was told, it was between $8,000 to $10,000, with medical coverage as well as the lock fee.
Up to 10,000.
Is that what you're asking for, though? Is that what you're...
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll up to $10,000 cover it?
I believe so, yes.
And do they also need to move it from part-time to full-time?
Correct.
Got that, Casey?
Maybe, let me see. I'll make a motion to approve a full-time person instead of a part-time to up to $10,000 for additional benefits.
That'll work.
Second.
And I should say, last week, we did receive $50,000 grant from USDA to offset our rescue that we already budgeted for. So this cost savings there, we can reach in at least for the next five years.
Great.
Do we have a second?
Melissa, second.
Melissa.
A second.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
No.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Next item is engineering agreement with CWB for, first of all, the EJ CDC, that's the Engineers Joint Contract Document Committee. Is Clint Bell here? Yeah, Clint, do you want to kind of give a explanation of this document?
Sure. That document is kind of a, just a background document. It gives all the legal language for the associated work orders. You guys also have those in your package there, the three work orders that might be considered tonight. The contract provides the legal language that just sets out all the termination clauses and everything that might come about, so you don't have to redo a 60-page, you know, document every time you sign a work order. That's how most engineers do associated work these days. They'll sign a contract, which is the standard contract language. It says that we have the ability to do engineering work for you guys on as-needed basis. Then the work order dictates what that work is, provides the scope, provides the amount and the payment terms. So it provides everything that's needed to clearly define a project. So approving that standard contract really does nothing as far as approving work for us. It just approves the terms that we will work under moving forward.
Right.
And just for your information, we're currently working under, I think it's expired, but, you know, we've always worked through the standard language.
Yeah, we've had a five-year agreement with y'all in the...
Yes, sir.
It's about to term.
Ten years we've been working here, we always have that when we have a contract with you guys. We have the standard language and the work orders actually, you'll notice on there that they reference that. So it just provides all the legal stuff and attorney language in there, so you don't have to re-sign that every time.
Y'all get that? Anybody?
It's a renewable contract up to five years, so that standard contract can be renewed up to five years.
Right.
So that you don't have to go through that every time.
Right.
And this is the contract that, as a professional service, you were explaining a little bit about how it, this is the contract that we'd like, it's, you're rated based on other engineering firms, or no?
No, sir.
No, this is just the standard contract?
Yeah, standard contract.
To perform engineering services for Heat Springs?
Yes. It just pretty much covers all, of course, protects both sides of both parties. There's a lot of owner language in there so that, you know, you guys can get out of the contract at any time. It provides how that works and arbitration, any lawsuits or anything that happens in the, that has to be covered in all that contractual terms, that's in that document. But as far as selecting and actually doing the scope of services and the dollar amount, that's what the work order is doing. So you're approving no work right now.
Right.
You're approving the language that if you, we need to do this first, that way the work order could reference this, and that's the work that would be associated.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Take a step.
We had another workshop that was canceled. I don't know, do we need to meet again?
I don't think you need to meet on this, but you can.
This is, so just to be clear, this is the one that's just a blanket one that you'd have with the city regardless bond or no bond, just to do our stuff when we need stuff done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So if the mayor calls me up and says, hey, can we look at the storm drain down here, we have a contract that we can actually, you know, sign a work order for that project and move on. Typically, I don't have to just go look at the storm drain.
Didn't have anything to do with the bond.
Yeah.
I mean, that allows us to do projects.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. So can I, before we vote, can I ask one more question? So these work orders from last, like, that's not what we're talking about here?
No, we're talking about...
We're just talking about that agreement?
Yes.
That he's shared in the...
Exactly, yes.
All right, I was unclear, sorry about that.
And we don't have to take this through a council vote, but it's the right thing to do, so we all need to agree on that if we can.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is a work order number one that was presented to us by CWB Engineering on the design work for the Sulfur Creek Trails. The survey, preliminary design, final design, and bidding and negotiating added up to $98,500. That's on a $1,600,000 project. Do we have a motion to award this work order?
I'm going to give this right forward.
Second.
Yes.
Chris Foster, no. Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
I wanted to wait until we had a canceled workshop. I think we need to have another workshop.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Work order number two is the Main Street Stormwater Improvements. And another reason that CWB is very qualified and deserving of this work is because of the many, many hours and efforts that they put in on our stormwater. They did a stormwater survey several years ago that was two books that were, oh gosh, four inches apiece thick and actually identified all of the stormwater issues that we have all the way from the north part of town to Sulfur Creek. So like I said, it's not that they, this is something that they don't already have quite a bit of experience and quite a bit of sweat equity in. And this next work order is number two, is for Main Street Stormwater Improvements It's the drainage along Third Street and Fifth Street. The project's funded through the bond refinance, and the construction cost is estimated at And their quote on the engineering work and design work for that part of the stormwater improvements is $166,000.
We're going to apply for a grant, or have we already?
We have, and we didn't receive that grant. Nope, there was not anybody in the whole state of Arkansas that received a grant on stormwater, street improvement. It just, they didn't issue any. They did some for, what was it, Clint? They did, I think, a hazardous waste mitigation, but as far as, we were very disappointed, even White River Planning, who helped us with that grant application. This is the first time, I think, in a long time the state has turned down everything.
Is that something that we can reapply for, or is it not?
We will, yes. Clint, how does that normally work?
It opens back up, you can reapply. We're probably going to reapply in what's left, since they do have the bond, it covers the $3 million worth of work. We're probably going to reapply for the additional 400.
I'll make a motion that we approve this work order. Second. Thank you for pointing out this one.
Nancy?
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next work order is work order number three, and this is for the Highway 25 Stormwater Improvement Design. This construction cost is estimated at $759,000, and it, project will be billed in a lump-sum rate of $64,500. It's for survey, preliminary design, final design, and bidding and negotiating. Do we have a motion to accept this work order?
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is the compensatory time for the SRO officers. Chief Hale, would you like to kind of give us a explanation of what we're doing?
Well, Mayor, we kind of went over this last month, and we're kind of, I'm still learning, but the auditors like things to be very specific sometimes, and I think I might have a recommendation on how to work with compensatory time. And that is all we're trying to do here, is make sure the SRO's contract stays in compliance through allowing our way because the compensatory time is in the handbook. We're restricted from no compensatory time in the following year, so SROs are going to have to fill that for us to be in compliance with the contract, so...
This is the issue we voted on at the last meeting, but they're asking for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. This would be an amendment, I think, to the employee handbook.
For this particular case?
Yeah, this, that's what you're, that's what you're voting on, is to amend the employee handbook to add that provision, is that correct? Yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to amend the employee handbook for the compulsory pay for the SRO.
Wait, do they want us specifically to read this language and include that?
Well, you don't, you don't have to read it, you can if you want to.
Okay.
You just need to approve it.
I'm sorry, who said the second?
Louis, did you have a...
No, I was going to write this.
Oh, okay.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to, motion carried. We'll move on to new business. This is an application for a 7525 grant for dumpsters and purchase them from public, for Public Works. The purchase of the dumpsters for collecting cardboard from businesses, schools, hospitals. The city of Heat Springs will use six six-yard dumpsters and six four-yard dumpsters to place at the city businesses, schools, hospitals to collect cardboard. The city uses a solid waste truck that is designated for cardboard collection only, and using these dumpsters will save time and money, making collection of the cardboard more efficient. The total grant amount is 12,000, or project amount is $12,000. The grant amount requested is 75%, which is $9,000, and our local matching funds of 25% would total $3,000. It probably will take a while to complete this grant due to the metal issues that everybody's having and getting these dumpsters that are, that are built and delivered, so, but we want to go ahead and apply early so that we can get in line to receive these dumpsters.
I have a general question, is a newbie still learning, do we budget already at like the beginning of the year for like all these miscellaneous $3,000 grants? I mean, I think these grants are great, I'm just curious how we just kind of know...
Some that we do, that we're aware of, some of them that it's kind of comes up, you know, during the year.
And we just kind of keep like a slush fund almost for stuff like this?
Yes, yes. For sanitation, you know, has a...
Has their own little...
Has a strong fund balance.
Right, yeah.
And this will be under equipment as well.
Gotcha.
So... Do we have a motion to accept the solid waste and recycling grant?
So moved. Second.
So this one's already been, this grant is a done deal, it's been approved?
Once we, yes, if we can, yeah, yeah, if we approve it.
You're voting on the application, right?
Right, yes.
So we haven't been awarded?
Of course, this is, no, this is a pre-application form.
Yeah, we're voting on whether or not to apply.
We're voting on virtually the $3,000 of matching funds.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item of new... Motion carried. Next item of new business is the purchase of, um...
Police officer.
Well, no, police officers' ability to make emergency hire outside their standard starting rate. Chief Hale, would you like to kind of explain this?
Well, basically on this, uh, it was not put into the twenty-one budget for officers, but based on our recent hiring process and the response we have gotten back, I am asking for two new positions, uh, to be covered through the end of the year. And basically, what happens when you hire a new officer is we start at thirty-one thousand dollars, uh, in benefits, and right now, after talking with several other departments, I realize that, uh, nobody's interested in being a law enforcement. Uh, we're, we had a very difficult time. We've got two people on our civil service, uh, lineup. We've already hired one of those to replace Lieutenant Black, and we will have a thirteen-week academy for him. The second person is also, uh, will be taken new hire, and there will be a thirteen-week academy involving her. I am needing some people on the street right now that know what they're doing, and that's why I'm asking for this. Uh, sort of, a lot of officers are hard to come by, and I'm needing the ability to negotiate. Uh, you know, my intentions are, we fall within a thirty-one to thirty-six thousand dollar pay scale, and if we can get an officer with three years of experience, I would like to go ahead and bring him in at what one of our three-year officers would make. Uh, the total effect in my budget would be about sixty thousand dollars through the end of the year. Uh, and then, of course, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be struggling to even in. So, uh, our SROs, we're losing them to the school full time, so my plan had really been to ask a twenty-two, uh, twenty-two budget, but I'm just, I'm needing some people. And I've not asked, uh, for a few years, and me and Lieutenant, just talking about it, I don't think that we've had an addition to the least part in eight to ten years. And it's, it's high. So, that's basically why I'm asking. I don't know, we need more kind of numbers.
So this is to replace Lloyd plus?
No, sir. We, we've already replaced Lloyd with one of the positions the civil service provided, uh, but, uh, I'm asking for a little more in addition to that. That'll bring our total, uh, right now we have sixteen officers for seventy-two hundred paid. Uh, in my, in my surveys I'm doing right now, you know, we're still running per capita more, fewer officers per capita than, than anybody.
Not that I know of. It should, here.
I'm needing help.
But I can't tell you the month number.
So these two would replace the SROs that you won't have during the summer?
Basically. We get the SROs for about thirty-three to forty days pending through the summer, which is the toughest months, but I'd be losing them in large degree if I'm correct.
And so we need an additional vehicle as well as part of that, or?
Yes. That's my question.
The vehicle too.
Yeah, right.
Do we have a motion to, uh, accept the hire of two police officers at experienced pay? And you're just asking for that for the remainder of the year?
Well, they would, they would be two new positions created, yes.
Yeah.
With, with, you know, twenty-two.
So this would be a motion for two new positions plus an adjustment to the handbook to bring in experienced officers at their, at the city's current experience level?
Right.
Do we include in this motion the?
Car.
The car? Do we do that separately?
You probably ought to separate your motions into one subject.
Well, I'm, I move that we accept, um, that we approve the hiring of two new officers at the experienced rate of pay.
The two new officers, two new positions?
Two new positions.
Plus an amendment to the handbook.
Plus an amendment to the handbook to, okay, to hire in at that, at that experienced rate of pay.
Second.
Nancy?
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is the purchase. Chief Hale, you wanna get up again? I'll put all this on you. You're the one who are asking for everything. Um, purchase of a Dodge Charger police package. Um, the state, um, bid package is thirty-six five thirty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, uh, I wasn't gonna hit you for this until twenty-two, but, uh, now that we're on a roll, I would ask that, uh, we've got three new units coming, and I've got an opportunity to pick up a fourth and go ahead and roll it into, um, a leasing program, and I would like authorization to go ahead and do that.
Is there a reason why we couldn't wait for budget?
I'm adding two more people. We can get by, but we're, you can fast wire duct tape run that.
Is this a lease or purchase? I thought this was a purchase.
Just cars that are ready to come off the fleet and.
He said something about. Now, he rolled us into a lease.
So the three new ones, are those all SUVs?
Three that are ordered are SUVs. I have a line on a Charger, uh, that would be set up similar to the SUVs.
Now, this, this shows this to be a purchase. Are you gonna, you said something about rolling it into the lease?
I've got an opportunity to do that, and it's a time factor that I'm gonna have to be deep. Now, if we're gonna do an outright purchase, uh, that would be acceptable to dealership as well.
So the three that are coming in, just, if you're gonna catch up, the three that are coming in are just replacing the old ones that are held together with duct tape?
Yeah, pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah.
I've, I've got enough in fixed assets that was budgeted.
Sure.
Covered the cost of the three, and y'all have already agreed to, to do an lease agreement on those. Uh, and, and I've gotten quite a second opportunity to, uh, get a fourth on the same lease agreement. Uh, we may have to deal with that separately.
I guess that's, yeah.
So is that it?
If we're gonna go with the lease, if we're gonna go with an outright purchase, authorize the money and I'll get the fourth.
Is it a lease? Do we lease them and then with the option to purchase?
We can.
What's the preference? What's your preference? The lease or the purchase?
I vote this first. We got the money in the account, from what I'm told, we can get it.
Is there a downside to leasing? I'm just curious, just?
It just provides a place that was more.
Gotcha.
And you, with three SUVs, uh, y'all have to refresh my memory. Why do we go with those SUVs instead of Chargers?
We're hoping the front ends will hold up better on in the long term. I mean, our ten-year cars, we're replacing trucks on everything after eight, you know, seven, eight years. Of course, they're police cars. They're nothing different than your everyday drive. So, uh, we've got one with a motor that's about to go. My motor's not that great today.
And how much were those SUVs, at least, at our poll?
I think they were thirty-nine thousand on that one.
Chief, would you remind me? I, I remember before when we purchased police cars, that there's been an additional cost for outfitting them or?
That's.
And that's included, that's, that's everything that's on the second page of this order is?
Yeah, there'll be some minor things, radios, cameras, little minor things, that'll come out of another budget.
Okay.
So in the long run, would another SUV be best, or a Charger where the front ends?
We won't be able to find one.
Two.
There, there's, we can't find now. We've been waiting, what, twelve weeks now for these three, and they just went in the bin twenty days ago, thirty days ago.
Well, we have to wait for this one?
Four to six weeks they'll be here. Who knows?
What's the delivery on this vehicle?
It, it's gonna run about the same because Dodge had already ordered. They, they can buy some, have them on, on hand to sell, but if we get it now, I could go ahead and order that, get the same, so, so, get the console, seats, all that stuff. All these are gonna look, you know, the same. That's, that's what I'm after here, you know, with the lives. That's why I'm including the, the bid, so, so that everything is coming out exactly the same. We've got to get away from these vehicles quickly.
These two new officers couldn't bike around?
Do what?
They can't ride bicycles?
Oh, they do. It's gonna get harder to find them.
Harder to catch the bad guys.
Get them those electric bicycles. Yeah, there you go.
They're doing enough chasing as it is. I'll let them do it with.
Well, I mean, I guess the debate is, why give them new officers? Gotta give them the tools to do their job, right?
That's right.
And so, can't expect them to do their job without the tools.
I'll make a motion to purchase this new Charger which we state bid as presented.
Second.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank y'all.
Next item is an ordinance for Melissa and Steven Choate of Big John's Tree Manu- Tree Manufacturing, or Big John's?
It's just Big John Manufacturing.
Big John Manufacturing.
Tree Equipment.
Okay. That, uh, every once in a while, they, we've got a couple of big fans that, uh, that go on our leaf blowers and, um, and we have found out how we can get Big John to prefab some of the parts to it and some of the fan itself, and then we balance it and down at Public Works and, and put it together, and saves us a whole lot of money, and they've been kind enough to, to do this for us. But, um, Scott, did we run over our allotted, or did we have an amount for Big John's?
I don't think you guys have ordered anything.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was.
This year.
Yeah, okay.
We gave y'all some metal, but, um...
But not this year, yeah, okay, since you've been on the council. And so this is to, uh, uh, an ordinance that authorizing the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Big John Manufacturing, um, to the extent of said authority and, uh, for other purposes. Um, anybody want to read that ordinance?
That's taken. Give me a read.
Yeah.
What ordinance number would it speak?
It would be two zero two one dash zero five.
Ordinance number two zero two one dash zero five. An ordinance authorizing the city of Heber Springs to conduct business with Big John Manufacturing Corporation, prescribing the extent of said authority and for other purposes. Be it ordained by the city council of City of Heber Springs, Arkansas as follows. Section one, Big John Manufacturing Corporation is a business in which council member Melissa Choate owes an executive or managerial office and ownership interest. Section two, in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated, section fourteen dash forty-two dash one oh seven B one, the city council hereby authorizes the mayor to contract with Big John Manufacturing Corporation. Despite any indirect benefit, council member Melissa Choate may derive from said business. Section three, the authority granted here into the mayor to conduct business with Big John Manufacturing Corporation shall be limited in scope, timing, cost to the purchase of parts, material, and supplies for the repair and maintenance of city equipment at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars per year, dated this blank day of July two thousand twenty-one.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Nancy?
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Epstein.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, I have here an additional fire person. Um, I think we already addressed that, yeah, and, um, and so y'all skip down to an encroachment on one eleven West Cersei Street. Doug, would you like to?
Once again, this is, uh, this house is ever-for-sale. We're trying to close on this door. It's kind of discovered that the house is inside of the setback. Um, GPS is wonderful, but it's kind of giving us a problem with all these overhouses that are still not quite squared a lot or hanging over, so, um, that's all this is. Nothing different that we have done in the past. If the, if that section of ground is ever vacated, uh, by any means, then it can't be built back. Uh, it would have to come back to code or ordinance to, to proper setbacks.
This is just kind of housekeeping like we do quite a bit of the times on just grandfathering in old encroachments. See, anyone want to come up with a, come with a motion?
I have a motion that we have approved the encroachment on, they want eleven West Cersei Street.
Second. Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the Water Department Audit. Uh, we have Turner and Williams and Associates, I assume, here. There you are. And, uh, or you can make Paul Graham do that for you. Okay? Uh, yes, please.
And Paul did give me a wire, so he's also a gentleman. So, thank you for that. And I'm here with Turner Williams and Associates from Cersei, presenting the water and sewer audit. So, one of the first things that I'd like to address is part of being an auditor that is in high demand right now is internal controls within the process of taking cash payments and the water department. If y'all read recent news and things of that nature, so I just wanted to point out that at your water and sewer department, you have multiple levels of checking and balance system that's helping to keep that from happening. So I just wanted to let you know that we do look into that and that that is something that we feel is really, really relevant at your facility. So saying that, you guys have a lot of projects going on at the water and sewer department, and this... And this year, your non-restricted cash was down about one point seven million and your restricted cash about two point three million because they are continually working to improve the water and sewer system. There's a lot of large projects going on. And in that included getting a tractor and a new billing software system that you probably seen some changes there in your billing, as well as the equipment street project was completed, which is about five hundred fifty-six thousand. The George Lane project was completed, about a hundred and fourteen thousand. You had about three point two million dollars in construction in progress as they're, took out a new bond last year. And they're working on the high service pump station, the hospital elevated storage, and the yard storage tanks. And so, those are in progress as of the end of the audit, which was in just, in September of last year. A little behind on presenting thanks to COVID and everything else, of course. And then, um, also, you have a new sewer bond project that began during the year, which is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So, your assets are up about three point five million on your projects. And then, of course, there's depreciation on those projects that goes up and down during the year. But that is what is really happening on the asset side of the balance sheet there. Does anyone have any questions about any of that? And then, on the liabilities, the main change is in the bond payable. You had a bond payable of over twenty-four million. Last year, you paid off seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that bond during the current year, which is, of course, kind of take a little bit to get that paid down, but that, it's making progress. You have a very strong net position and strong equity for the current year is two hundred and twenty-one thousand. So, that means that you're very stable and even in the economy and things have changed in nature, the water. There's a lot of rising costs, as you've probably seen in everything right now. So, the cost of pipes, the cost of everything is drastically going up. And what we saw is an adjustment on the expense side on their part to try to mitigate the cost increases on the repairs and things that they, you know, can't do anything about. And that's, that's always a good sign when you're doing an audit, when you see costs that you can't help go up. The cost of materials and chemicals were up about thirty, two to thirty-eight percent depending on the category there. But then, there was large decreases in things like professional services, the education and training because they couldn't travel, you know, with COVID. And there were lower repairs on the vehicles again because their traveling was less as well. So, there was a lot of, you can tell forethought into managing those swings. So, you also had on the interest, the interest income, because the bond money is there in the account, you had an increase in that income of about ninety-nine thousand dollars. The interest cost over high of about three hundred and ninety-five thousand that you paid in interest expense. So, those are the main changes that I saw as far as income and expenses. But the income is up because you had about twenty-four point five million gallons increased in usage during the year, which at a cost rate went from two forty-seven to two ninety-seven. So, it was about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar increase in the revenue there with the increasing usage and the increase in the rate. Does anyone have any questions about any of that?
Wow.
All right. And your cash flow, this is something that's very important when you're looking at a industry's financial statements. Because you're, you want to always have a positive cash flow. But in a situation where you're in a large capital expenditure procedure, that can be negative. And that's what happened this year. You actually have a negative, a decrease in your cash, in cash equivalents because of the large expenditures that we talked about during that process. So, besides that, though, all of the actual operational cash flow from operating activities is up about one point five million. So, that's a, that's where you really want to focus on what's happening on your day-to-day operations. And so, that was on the positive side. But the capital improvement and the financing related to that is what brought the overall down. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I don't think so.
Y'all have anything else, I'll head back to Cersei.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paul, would you like to?
I just want to say, I appreciate all the people up here in the county of Heber Springs for their support for our water utility. We work every day to make sure that you guys have the best possible water available to fix the damage. We're blessed with wonderful lakes and we're in the correct spot in that lake. Our water is exceptional. And it, we do clean it, make it a little bit cleaner, not a whole lot cleaner. But we do make sure that it's fit for you guys to ingest. And so, we, you know, we know it's important for you guys to be safe when you're ingesting it. And we want to make sure that it stays that way. We also want to make sure that wastewater that you guys put out is well-balanced. We don't have to say to you guys, but wastewater we put out will get treated in an environmentally safe way. We do meet stringent standards with ADQ, um, because we do go to drought stream, obviously. People in Payburn and Cersei, they kind of drink it later on. As far as anybody in Payburn drinks that. But, um, if it's good, it's a problem. But, um, anyway, just want to thank everybody for their support. If y'all did not have, if we did not have the support of you guys, we would not have been able to do these projects that CEBD helped us develop some designs. We don't do them, I guess, basically. These projects, I know that this has been said before, I was here that time, but these projects, we did get completed. I cannot stress to you guys how important they were and how much we were safe in February of this year. We had over forty-four water systems in state Arkansas that were either on conservation and/or boiler. They were running out of water. People were having leaks on their end. Law retos are having leaks on their end. They couldn't keep up. We, with the new tank you see out the bypass, the new tank over here by the water office and our pump station and transmission main that basically takes all the water from Thomas Joe's and mount top and splits it off for people waters, water. It allows us to supply our wholesalers with as much water as possible without draining the system at ease. Our number one customer is ourselves, we're the Heber Springs Water Department, and that's who we take care of. But we do also enjoy helping our other systems. And so, we do make sure that we give them the best quality water and abundant quality. And so, these projects, if we had not got those completed, typically, when we, and Clint will tell you this, when we, when we discuss timeframe for these projects, we always wanted to, before the summer gets here. Anytime you're working with water, you want to do it before the summer gets here. Because once the summer gets here, that's when it dries out. Obviously, we have terrorists come, but also mainly it dries out. Our biggest competitor is God. He gives water for free. We do charge, we don't charge the water, but we charge the stuff to get to you. But when it's raining, people don't want to spray their wa- spray water, our water on their lawns. And so, we always try to get it done by the summertime. And this year, we got done by the winter, which so far, I'm knocking wood, the biggest day we had as far as usage was in, it was in February during that one week ice event. We used up five point, I think it was five point two million, which was our biggest day. That wouldn't have, we would have been on a conservation order had we not had these system upgrades. And thanks to you guys for approving the bond issue. That bond issue did exactly what we told you it was going to do. We, we, we went and put those water systems in. We have, basically, we have one more water project on our water distribution and treatment side. That's a treatment skid. And we do have an old nineteen-seventies treatment plant that everything's falling apart and it's obsolete. We have to make stuff to fix it. If we get that skid, we are probably going to do away with that old plant. We won't need it anymore. We do have, just to give you a quick update, we do have one big project coming that is already going to be here in August the first, or is August second? Monday, August second is when it's going to break ground. We are replacing the thirty-inch, actually it's twenty-one inch now, we're replacing with a thirty-inch sewer main. That sewer main feeds or receives the discharge from pretty much all of the town. It goes out to our wastewater treatment plant. It's going to go from wastewater treatment plant all the way to Eleventh and Scott. It's a very necessary project. That line's been there at least since nineteen eighty-three, parts are probably older than that. It's got root inundations. It also has issues when we have large rain events. So, that one is coming. You're going to see it start out at the bypass. It'll be, it'll start there and then it'll work its way basically to the back country, so to speak. And then, it's going to, probably the parts you are going to see is when it gets near equipment street. And then, it kind of goes back by the old ball fields back there and goes, and it will cross over Seventh Street. So, you'll see it in that one. We are looking at a new design on our wastewater treatment facility. That's going to, that's in the works. Wastewater treatment plant right now, we can treat one point seven five million gallons of water a day. When we have larger rain events, they can go up to ten million gallons of water coming into our plant. We do have the inflow of Eden Nile now, which adds a little bit to that, but to be honest, we need not as much as we were afraid of. But we are looking at getting a new wastewater treatment plant in progress. And, uh, other than that, guys, again, I tell you on time, I know it's a shame this plug is in here and on camera on the speaker anyway. Paul is on Facebook. If you want to know where your, if you want to know where your water bill goes, look it up on Facebook. You can find Heber Springs Water and Sewer Department. You'll see every day what our guys go through, who you're paying, what you're paying for, what we do. The other day, we had a lightning event during a storm. We were out there in the middle of the warm rain fixing the water main. And we actually had three things happen. We had a lightning, lightning hit one of our tanks, took out a, a couple of search protectors, almost blew up our skating system. We did have a raw water pump, as the water intake go out there and had lightning event. We are getting it replaced at Wendy's, Wendy's. And then, we had a line just struck by lightning through a mailbox. The mailbox got struck by lightning, took out a section of our pipe. So, um, we had to work it. We had to fix our, so we were out there lighting, thundering storms and fixing it. And our guys do a really good job. I'm really proud of them. But again, we cannot do our job without the support of the community. And we really appreciate all you guys for everything you've done for us, especially Mayor Clark. He's been a really good asset to us and we couldn't ask for his aid. That's all I ask.
Paul, we, um, we can treat seven million gallons of water or we?
We're ready for nine million gallons of water per day. That's what our clear well, which is underneath the big treatment plant on Front Street, is ready for nine million gallons a day.
Okay.
The biggest day we ever had was in two thousand twelve, six point two million. We actually had a conservation order during that time. We were telling people to quit watering their yards. We actually had sections of town that we had to monitor to make sure that they weren't watering. And we did it every other day's kind of thing. So, on Mondays, this, this group, this area could water. Tuesdays, this area, you know, so we did something like that. That is when this ball got rolling. We knew we had deficiencies in being able to distribute and treat enough water to get out there for people. We had a large drought during that time. Ironically, luckily, though, we did get our, our system upgrades and we got the ball rolling. Y'all, y'all proved bonds. We got that started. It took several years to get all of it done. But, that being said, if down to Ace, if we had had what we had in February, we probably wouldn't have been able to do as well as we did. We wouldn't have been on conservation order. We're good. And again, y'all, to y'all's credit, that's why we're good. The same way with our wastewater industry. Nobody ever thinks about, until I start blabbing about it, nobody really ever thinks about what's underneath their feet. The only thing that most people care about is what they see. You know, these tanks up here, they're nice and hopefully try to keep them hidden up. You look for it, which I'm getting one repainted pretty soon. But it's what's underneath your feet that really matters. And when you're washing yourself in the morning, if you're drinking coffee, most of the time, people use our water in. Brush your teeth. You know, you take a shower. You got to wash your clothes. So, you use our water all the time. And that's my goal in life, believe it or not. My goal and our goal is to provide everybody with the best quality and the best quantity of water we can. Again, we need, we need funds to do that. It costs money. As I said earlier, thirty-eight percent rise in parts and the chemical cost. We have to raise rates every once in a while for that. And it's not a fun thing to do. And I hate it, I mean, I pay my water bills as well, you know? Otherwise, they'll shut me off and I might be blocking myself, blocking my meter off. But they don't even give me a key now. But anyways, but anyway, so, I just want to tell you guys, I appreciate everything you've guys done and as well as the citizens. The citizens have been very receptive to us. We want to earn everything that we get from your water bill. I also want you guys to be able to see everything that our bigger water bills pay. Some of the stuff I've seen our guys do and our ladies do is, is incredible. And they don't, nobody sees it. And I'm not saying I want you guys out there to know what we get into. But I want y'all to be aware that your water bill is, is well spent on our. I want y'all to know that. And I hope y'all can trust me.
Thank you, Paul. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And I'll answer any questions, but usually people don't ask because I've answered too many.
Next item, and Terry, you may have to address this since you kind of performed this, uh...
We usually approve the audit as presented.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
I move that we approve the audit as presented. Second. Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Terry, this is on ordinance for the SANK. I guess that's how you pronounce that.
That's my understanding.
Can we skip the Liz Blankenship zone?
Yes, because she does not have her ordinance ready. They've got to perform, her attorneys have to, have to put that together. And, and they just haven't had time to do it yet.
I'll talk just a little bit about this and then I'll ask their attorney who's here. I asked him to be here tonight. This goes back to, and I think each of you got a copy of the lawsuit that was filed that had attached to it ordinances that were passed in the past. And then, there was a repeal of an ordinance. And long story short, uh, this piece of property, I think it's an elderly couple. And they lost a sale over this, that ordinance that was repealed years ago back when, uh, Mayor McPherson was in office. And it's created a cloud on their title, which they lost the sale and now they can't sell it. I don't think they could sell it. I doubt they could borrow money against it. And what happened was there was a platted road in the subdivision that was never used and the road was not placed where the platted road was. So, we've been trying to figure out a way to resolve this. And this is the way I think is the best for the city to resolve it, is to abandon any claim they have to erode in this legal description that's in this ordinance on the two pieces of property. I tried to highlight those on, uh, the information you received on the survey. But Chris O'Neil represents the SANKs and I'll be glad and ask him to maybe tell you a little bit about the history here.
Just to briefly run you through, Mr. Lynn pretty much adequately described it. In nineteen ninety-nine, the city passed an ordinance that abandoned Boulderland and some land that ran alongside Boulderland. Now, subsequent to that, if you'll look on that survey page, Mr. Lynn highlighted it. You'll see there's two tracts of land running right along that road right there. You'll see the house actually sits on part of those tracts of land. Well, in two thousand nine, the SANKs purchased this house and this piece of property right here. And then, in two thousand ten, the city went through and repealed the ordinance that abandoned the property. Now, I could get into whether or not you really go through and do that. But the effect is essentially a clouded title on this piece of property right here. So, no title insurance, no underwriters for it will ever provide any kind of title insurance or anything else. The SANKs are essentially stuck with this property, unable to sell it, sell it if it was subject to a mortgage or anything else. So, I agree with Mr. Lynn. I think the easiest solution for the SANKs would be for the city to just abandon these two tracts of land right here. We're not asking for anything to mess with the road out there. We're not asking for anything involving any other property, just these two tracts of land that are causing the SANKs problems. So, and I appreciate the time this evening, I really do.
Does anybody have any questions about this? Would you like for me to read the ordinance?
Uh, if you, if you would, Terry. This be oh six, ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash oh six. An ordinance vacating and abandoning all the rights of use of the city of Heber Springs to that portion of a platted street designated herein for other purposes. Whereas a platted portion of a proposed, proposed street located in Trillwood subdivision, Cleveland County, Arkansas, has not been developed nor used by the general public and is no longer required for corporate purposes. And whereas the public interest in welfare will not be adversely affected by the abandonment of the street. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated section fourteen dash fifty-four dash one oh four and fourteen fifty-four dash three oh three confirms upon the cities of the first class the authority to vacate such portions of streets as may not for the time being be required for corporate purposes. And whereas the city desires to abandon and vacate that portion of the proposed street as further described herein. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas. Section one, the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons all of its right of use together with the rights of the public generally in and to that platted portion of a proposed street located in Trillwood subdivision, Cleveland County, Arkansas, as described on the attached Exhibit A attached here too, which legal description is incorporated herein as this set out word for word. Section two, a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk shall be filed in the office of the recorder
the city clerk shall be filed in the office of the recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. Section 3. All ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 4. In the event any section, subsection, or part of the ordinance is later ruled to be invalid, the other provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section 5. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Pass this blank date of July 2021.
Thank you, Terry. And we'd like to have a motion. This would be wonderful, because I can remember four or five years ago dealing with this issue and the just Boulder Run, the whole egress and ingress that just, it was a, it was a bad issue.
My understanding, there's been some history. In fairness to the SNCs, or at this point, they are, they are a bit elderly, and they're experiencing health problems. They need to sell this house. And the only other option to go through on this is to proceed with the lawsuit and try to quiet the title, which is something that could potentially take quite a bit of time. Maybe more time than these folks even have.
I'm making a motion that we vacate and abandon all the rights and use of this property.
Second.
And adopt the ordinance. Rebecca Prince?
Abstain.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Before we move to the last item on new business, in old business, the first thing was new position. Was that not the carryover to the table item for the project manager for bonds? Was that not what that?
No, that was actually, I don't believe so. I think that was.
It's been a new position for the past couple of months on our agendas. We haven't discussed it.
Yeah. But, no, I think, Melissa, I think we were waiting to have another meeting to discuss how, workshop to.
Remember, we've had those two workshops that have been canceled?
To see what those duties are and to see the need of that position. Next item is I'd like to inform the council and the cities of, City of Heber Springs, my decision to retire from the position of mayor effective July 31, 2021. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for their passion and their willingness to serve. This is not always the easiest thing to do. I'd love to thank our supervisors, Chief Hale, Stacy Mills, Scott Habley, Chief Robitaille. I'd like to thank our office staff, Lisa, Donna, David, and Amy. Thank y'all very much for your hard work. Special thanks to Judge Holmes. It's been a pleasure working with Jerry, and I appreciate our friendship. And I think what we've done is we've tried to do the best for the community, regardless of.
That's what I was going to say. I appreciate the long time of friendship that you had and have added and will continue. It's sure been an honor.
Yeah. Thank you. It's been my pleasure. Most of all, I'd like to thank my wife Peggy. Peggy, are you, is that you back there? You can't hide. For your love and support and patience. Just bless you and thank you, sir, for the seven years of a good run. So, thank you. That's all I got.
Jimmy, we appreciate, we appreciate you and all of the hard work you've done in the City of Heber Springs. And we wish you the happiest retirement.
Well, thank you. And, you know, I have nothing but, it's been my honor to serve as mayor. And I wish the greatest success to the council and the city for many years to come. So I know that we're leaving the city in good hands. And I look forward to see, see what happens in the future. So, thank y'all.
Do we need to go with memorandum regarding your vacancy?
Terry, we were talking about that memorandum.
Oh, I gave you that memorandum just to give you some information. Of course, you can't take anything, take any steps until there's a vacancy, which will be after the end of the month. What I would recommend that the council consider doing is going ahead maybe and setting a special meeting date, maybe that Monday. I think that's on a Saturday, so Sunday, maybe that Monday, if everybody could meet. And by then, and I'll be glad to talk with anybody in the meantime. Some of the things you've got to think about is you need to, number one, think about some person to serve in the position of acting mayor. Now, I gave you some information. I'm sure all of you've looked at it. It can be, it can be a council member, or it can be anybody, you know, John or Susie Smith out there, as long as they're living in the city and they're qualified, just like any position for mayor. That person would serve until the special election results happen. And the special election, you just have to set it within a reasonable time. 60 days is the quickest you can set it. But I know I talked with Nancy earlier today, and she in the county, that the county clerk had told her that she needed at least 70 days. And then it has to be on the second Tuesday of a month. So you can take whatever day you folks decide to pass the ordinance setting the election, and look out every how long you want to look, 70 days or whatever. Then go to the next second Tuesday. It could end up being 90 days. It could be 120 days. It's just got to be a reasonable amount of time. You'll also need to set the requirements and what the filing requirements are. I'd suggest you leave them what they are right now. I think it's a petition with 30 signatures. But there'll have to be a filing deadline. So I will try to answer any questions along the way. But it would be helpful for me in preparing the documents that you'll need to deal with at that meeting, if you folks can come up with a date, so that we have that date at that time.
A date for the special election.
For that special election.
Looks like it's going to be November, if it's 70 days.
That's what, yeah, that's kind of what it looked like to me, probably. And I don't know what the second Tuesday, I don't know what day.
The ninth?
Is the second Tuesday November?
November 9. So that's probably going to be about as, the quickest you could do it. You know, they've got to print the ballots and things like that. So I don't know if I've addressed some of your issues or not. But I'll be, I'm certainly available to try to answer any questions and guide you folks through this. I'll also point out, one of the things I told you in my memorandum is that in the interim, until you appoint an acting mayor, the clerk serves in that position. But I had a phone conversation with Ryan Bowman, with the Friday firm who does the bond issues. And he pointed out to me some wording, and that came from the municipal league, I'll point out. He pointed out some wording in that section of the code that talks, that it really addresses more of when that Mayor Kemp is unable to perform his duties. So it's not clear in the law if that means that it would be where the mayor was incapacitated but was still in office, or if that would apply to a vacancy in the office. So the law is just not clear there. And you have talked to two different lawyers, municipal league and Mr. Bowman, and they see it differently. My recommendation is, as soon as possible, appoint an acting mayor that solves the problem. Because I know that I think the Water Department is looking at possibly trying to save the city some more money in refinancing some bonds. So they'll need an ordinance signed pretty quick. And they certainly want to make sure whoever signs, when y'all approve, if you approve the ordinance, the mayor that signs it is properly in office.
So we've got the bond issues going on. We've got that other bond issue going on. So we need to get this done pretty efficiently. Is there no way that we can do, since we know, and sad to see you go as well, and thank you for all you've done for the community. You have to wait till it's vacated. We can't, knowing this, be ready for it.
It's not vacant.
You can set up a meeting. You can set up.
We can set up a meeting. That's all we can do.
Yeah. And pass the ordinance. But the ordinance says, once there's a vacancy, then you set the election date. But you're only talking about, actually, you may not even be talking about any, it may not gain you anything if you could do it tonight.
But could we, could the council set up a meeting to discuss potentials for interim?
Absolutely, yeah.
So that we could be ready on that Monday and know who we wanted to.
Absolutely, absolutely. You sure could, yeah. You sure could.
Yeah, okay.
In the meantime, Mayor Hurley will be.
Well, she's hoping no more than a day.
Queen for the day.
Yeah, I'm going to hit some later head.
And keep in mind, this is another thing that a lot of people have, you know, when I've talked with, gotten input from other legal sources, one of them in particular pointing out it is acting mayor.
That's right.
It's not mayor, it's acting mayor. So, and that has some legal ramifications. For instance, the question becomes what salary that person would receive. And I think probably you could address that in your ordinance, appointing that person, you know, depending on what you expect of them, I guess. But I tell you, I'm just giving you that food for thought. It's something you got to, you may want to address or talk about. So yes, you could certainly, you know, start being ready to run when the day comes.
I'm not running for anything.
No, I mean, I mean.
Hit the ground running.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, well, that's better.
You hit the ground running. There you go. Okay?
Thank you, Terry.
You bet.
That's helpful.
Should we go ahead and set up the special meeting date on Monday?
Monday the second.
The second, a time?
Did you just say May the second?
Monday, August 2nd.
August 2nd, okay.
I may have said.
Monday, August.
We need to set another meeting also to discuss the.
Pond.
Appointment.
The appointment, yeah.
What time on Monday? Can everybody agree on a time right now?
I can do any time. I'll make it work.
I can't beat that. I'll just set that. I can make it work.
Are we talking about?
Well, you're definitely, you're definitely going to need a quorum, so.
An evening meeting? Well, we don't know about, they're on vacation. An evening meeting or?
Maybe y'all could share that information and get a time, sometime within the next week or so. Just let me know.
Okay. Thank you for your counsel, Terry.
You bet. Anytime. All right.
One last thing I did forget. What, Doug?
You have a latest issue for 2015 George Lane.
Oh, yeah, we sure did. You want to discuss that, Doug?
Once again, this is just like we done with the last one. This is an encroachment on a side door setback. GPS is wonderful. It's catching everything. The house was built well before we had planning and zoning. And when they come back and replanted or resurfaced it, they call it just a section of the house across the side. And this is just the same grandfather notification letter that was vacated. It can't be built back.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Motion carried. We do have one announcement that, well, we've got open mic first. But I'd like to say just a couple of words. Most of all, even above my wife, we couldn't do this with all the employees with the boots on the ground. I tell you what, there's not an employee in this town, in this city, that doesn't work very hard and that cares about what they're doing, and that cares about their fellow man. So that's always going to be true. And let's don't ever forget that. So thanks to, thanks to all the city employees. Open mic. Is anyone, Mr. Faust?
Mayor's been calling a couple of times personally, thanks for your commitment to this community, helping a lot of folks about your back. And I want to thank the public with full support. And I do appreciate your time. Appreciate you helping the community and volunteering. I know you get paid, but it's not fair enough. It might be. So, first of all, I just.
Thank you.
I can't help this, but a lot of you, you have some quality of people.
Thank you, Maran. That's awful nice of you. One announcement, the 22nd of this month, First Arkansas Bank and Trust, they're going to come back down and do a ceremony for the deed, giving us the deed to the bank building. And it'll be at 10:30 in the morning. And so we'll have some photographers out there and the news and do it. We never did do it right like we should. And so we really want to thank the bank and give them an opportunity to show the county what they're doing for all of us. So remember that date. That's Tuesday, the 22nd. At the bank, yes.
I saw Tuesday, Thursday.
I'm sorry, it is Thursday. Yeah, we changed it. We've changed it three times. So it is Thursday, yeah. 22nd.
At the bank.
At the bank. Okay. We have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. It's, I've enjoyed working with you, everybody.
Enjoy retirement.
And I'm excited, huh?
Enjoy retirement.
I will. I will.
So now you have to get out at noon, when everyone at work is on a lunch break, drive 20 miles an hour with your blinker on.
Yeah, there you go.
Or you're a Walmart.
Perfect.